At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at drawyourcommunity.com. We ask that individuals and groups who wish to speak to the commission complete a form in advance for planning purposes. When appropriate, we also ask individuals to identify whether they are speaking in an official or personal capacity. Individuals participating remotely are asked to submit an online request, and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff has speaker slips available at the back of the room. All timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting either in person or remotely will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. The log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted through the Community Builder Tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners and is posted on the IRC website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials, and the commission's log of ex parte communications has been updated on the IRC website. I'd also like to note that since your last meeting, we have received 107 ecomments, three emails, and one phone communication. Those contacts have been distributed to the commission and posted online. Chair Baim?
Thank you, David. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. David, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that the commissioners are participating both in person and via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to please say here or present when called upon. Chair Baim?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Dostal?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Present.
Commissioner Serbin?
Present.
With 13 commissioners present, you do have a quorum. Chair Baim?
Thank you very much, David. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the IRC regular meeting on December 9th and continued on December 11th, 2021, and the special meeting that was also held on December 11th, 2021. We will begin this item by hearing any public comment on the minutes. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
None in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on the approval of minutes, you're welcome to do so. If you're present, please approach the microphone. If you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand. Not seeing any movement in the chamber and not seeing any virtual hands, that concludes public comment on this item. Chair Baim?
Thank you very much, David. Commissioner says this is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion. Let me ask if there is a motion for approval of the minutes from December 9th and 11th, 2021, and also the minutes from December 11th, 2021, as included with the agenda materials?
So moved.
Second.
Chen, thank you.
Second.
Who had the second? Commissioner Brown, thank you. Is there any discussion or clarifications or corrections required on any of these minutes? Seeing none? David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you. I'll note that commissioners' names will continue to be called in random order. Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Chair Baim?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz, I believe is absent. Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
The motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye. Chair Baim?
Thank you very much, David. We'll now turn to item four, a discussion impossible approval of, and bear with me as I read this into the record, the resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, adopting a redistricting plan adjusting the boundaries of the supervisory districts. This resolution was drafted based on the final map adopted by the IRC at our last meeting on December 11th, and which was included with today's agenda materials as the quote "2021 redistricting plan for the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors." Also included with today's agenda are two presentations and reports. First, on the ability to elect analysis from the IRC's consultants on racially polarized voting, Doctors Christian Gross and Natalie Masooka, and second, on the legal assessment from IRC Special Voting Rights Act Council, Bruce Adelson. All these materials have been circulated to commissioners and are posted on the IRC website. For this item, I'm sorry, we'll begin with any comments of introduction from John McKenzie of our demographer, Flow Analytics. We'll then hear from Doctors Gross and Masooka on the ability to elect analysis, and then from Mr. Adelson on legal aspects of the Voting Rights Act implications. Commissioners will have an opportunity to provide clarifying questions and comments after each presentation. We will then, after those presentations, turn to public comment on this entire agenda item. So without any questions and hoping that John McKenzie is with us, he is. Welcome, John. Good to see you. The floor is yours.
Good to see you as well, Chair Baim. So I'd just like to once again say thank you to all the members of the commission. We really enjoyed and felt privileged to be part of this process. We've worked on a number of redistricting projects, and I have to say, it was great to see the way this one was conducted with so much public comment and input being taken into consideration. We really enjoyed working on it, so thank you. I'd also like to thank, I'm going to thank my colleague Alex Brash, who you all know is fantastic. He did such amazing work, as well as Kate Elliott. You didn't see as much behind the scenes, but I'm going to take some time to, you know, they really did a great job, as well as a number of other folks on the work on the project. So if you're giving me this time, I'm going to thank my colleagues because we really couldn't have done it without them. And I also want to thank Dr. Gross and Dr. Masoaka just for providing so many analyses and then, you know, working under tight schedules as we all did. So it's really appreciated and thanks once again. And with that, I'll turn it over to Christian.
Hey, everybody.
Dr. Gross, just if you can wait one moment, I did promise commissioners a chance, if there are any questions for John or Flow Analytics on the matters they specialize in, before we turn to Dr. Gross. Okay, Christian, I'm very sorry to interrupt you. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks again, John. I'm wondering, in between the last meeting and now, did you guys do another run-through of the edges to see if there are any other technical scrubs that we needed to identify and decide on?
Alex did do another scrubbing, and there were no, I believe, Alex, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there were no additional changes that had to be made. We did the very thorough scrub for the previous, the final working draft map, and so that took care of, I think, pretty much everything. And the changes that were made from that map to the final map did not affect any of those areas. So I don't believe there were any new block changes resulting from the scrubbing.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll confirm that as well. The changes that were, that were made to the final were, you know, along very defined boundaries. So no need to date them any further. Thank you.
And I'll note a little, I'll note a little later how those changes have been captured in the final report.
Sorry, that's me. That's me. I'll note a little later how those changes have been captured in the final report. So seeing no other questions for Flow Analytics, apologies again, Dr. Gross, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I also, I want to say thanks to John and everyone, and good, great job to the commission, by the way. And we completed a 13-page report analyzing the data on the ability to elect of the map that was passed by you. I won't go into that in detail in the interest of time, but it is on the website. You've seen it, and it goes through and identifies the ability to elect of, excuse me, of, it identifies the ability to elect of Latino voters, and then also across the districts, and then particularly we focus on District 1, and then we also talk about District 4 and its ability to elect for voters of color and Latino voters. And then just really fast, I will share, I will share my screen and not go into as much detail, though, so you can, so you can see this. The report itself goes into quite a bit of detail of the entire, the entire map and the ability to elect and the voting rights empirical and data implications. And then the, the main takeaway itself, since we last spoke, is the ability to elect analysis of Latino candidates of choice in District 1 is 100%, and in District 4 is 80%. Both of those districts are majority-minority C-VAP, and then in District 2, it's 0%, District 3, it's 40%, District 5, it's 40%. And then I'll just leave the rest for you all to look at or ask questions about, but these are our empirical and database takeaways from the map that you passed.
Thank you, sir, very much. Sorry about that. Thank you very much for that, sir. So clarifying questions and comments for Dr. Gross. Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, Chair Baim, and thank you, Dr. Gross, for the report, and as well as Dr. Masoaka, for all of your work, especially, and also for all of your work up to this point. Very much appreciate it. My understanding was from, based on our last conversations, that this map presents the same ability to elect numbers as the 13B-11 map. And I see that with the Latino ability to elect in the table. Could you also please confirm that the ability to elect numbers for the Asian community and the Black community are also the same with this map as they were in 13B-11, or is that not true?
Yeah, thanks. Good question. And also, I want to thank Natalie and Jordan, also, who did a ton, said thanks for, thanks for, they're not able to be here today. But the data for Asian American candidates are, is on page, on page 12 and 13 of our report in detail, but just to go ahead and verbalize the exact results. In District 4, Asian American candidates of choice win 100% of the elections, and that is the, consistent with the previous map. The other data, in terms of the percentage of winning, Asian American, candidates preferred by Asian American voters, as I recall, is the same as the previous map. Those numbers did not change, if I recall correctly. There are slight differences in the C-VAP of the districts, of course, but in terms of the overall win rates of Asian American candidates of choice, Latino candidates of choice, and then also candidates that were supported by Black voters, the same, have the same conclusion as I did last time, the Black voters. Black voters supported candidates who are able to win in District 4. Asian American voters supported candidates who are able to win in District 4. Latino voters supported candidates who are able to win in District 4 and District 1.
Seeing no other questions? No other questions? Good. Dr. Gross, thank you. Please pass on thanks to Natalie and all colleagues. And I'm going to reserve on an awful lot of thank you notes for the end of the meeting. So we will thank everyone, though, but I think they know we're already grateful. So thank you for that. With that, we turn to Mr. Adelson. Bruce, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. It's good to see you all again. To keep it brief, as you could see from my legal opinion, that it's my conclusion that your final map does not appear to impair effect of the voting rights by purpose or effect of minority communities in San Diego County. So you have a District 1 that protects and preserves the opportunity to elect in the benchmark or the current supervisory plan. District 4 as well appears to be a viable majority-minority opportunity to elect district. You've heard the percentages in the other districts, and you've read them in the report. And my conclusion is, congratulations, that the map appears, as I said, not to discriminate in purpose or effect, which is the standard under the Voting Rights Act.
Yes, thank you so much for the report and all the support in this process, Dr. Adelson. So you specifically called out the Voting Rights Act, which we've obviously have talked a lot about, has been a major part of our decision-making. But I believe it's true that there are federal statutes as well, besides just the Voting Rights Act, federal civil rights laws that we have to pay attention to. And so I was wondering if you could comment on those. There are protected classes, such as African Americans, I believe, would be a protected class. Do you have any comments about that and the adequacy of the maps?
My reference is the Federal Voting Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, that was passed by Congress and signed into law by President Johnson. Other civil rights acts are really not, don't come into play here, because this is a supervisory district of voting decision that comes under the Voting Rights Act. There are protected categories of people under the VRA, that people, no discrimination based on race, color, or membership in minority language group. Of course, there are constitutional requirements under the 14th Amendment for no discrimination based on race and color, and there are myriad federal civil rights statutes that are protected categories that affect various aspects of business, commerce, and government operation, but they really don't apply to redistricting plans. There are only three protected categories of people generally under the VRA, no discrimination based on race, color, or membership in a minority language group. And for the most part, that tracks with the equal protection requirements of the U.S. Constitution's 14th Amendment.
Any other questions or clarifying comments? And I'm asking specifically commissioners virtually, because I always want to make sure I don't miss any hints. Very good. Seeing none. Bruce, thank you very much. I'm sure we will be in touch, both as this meeting goes along, and at least one more meeting, I hope, in the future. But thank you for that, and thank you for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that, we will thank again our consultants, and again, I'll reserve thanks at the end, but I'm sure the commissioners are grateful. And we turn to public comment on this agenda item. As we do, I'll ask staff to put the map up on the screen, just so members of the public and commissioners can see it one more time as we're hearing comments. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Baim. We have one speaker who has requested to address the commission in person, and six who have requested to address the commission remotely. I'll also check for members of the public who did not submit a request in advance. Each individual speaker on this item will have one minute to address the commission. Groups will be afforded three minutes. I'll ask all those who are participating remotely, who wish to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. We will begin with the in-person speaker. I'd like to invite forward Reverend Shane Harris. Please self-regulate your time using the timer on the screen behind the desk.
Thank you. Thank you, Commission. It's good to be here. And let me just say that I think it's very admirable work that you all have tried to do in regard to this last census and trying to figure out this map and get it right. To Mr. Inman's point, questions, I felt like they were really directed at me, because, you know, obviously, I'm here because I believe that civil rights are important. I do am very clear on the act, and I'm very clear on voting rights pertaining to the African American community. And I think that, I find it very interesting that we're talking about approving a map or sending it forward to the next agenda item toward approval, without looking at the fact that we have three districts in this county, that you all have said that you're doing equity, you're doing inclusion, you're making sure it's all equitable and fair. But there's three districts in this county that you're splitting the African American community up.
Thank you.
And one of those districts is District 2. So I ask you to reassess your perspective of what civil rights you're protecting and voting rights you're protecting, because in District 2, you have 2% of the African American population in Rancho San Diego and roughly around 6% in Alcohone. You're splitting a district where African Americans have some prominence, and I know that that kind of has been the history. So I'm asking you to reconsider that process and how you see what rights you're protecting, because splitting the Black community in three different districts does not represent any kind of level of equity, nor does it represent any kind of level of inclusion. Thank you.
And now we'll move to those participating remotely. Again, whether or not you have submitted an advanced request, I'd invite you to raise a virtual hand at this time by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Begin with John Mansour, followed by Chris Pierce. You have one minute to address the commission. John Mansour, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is John Mansour, and I'm an Iraqi-American. Dear commissioners, the future of our children and families of Alcohone and Rancho San Diego is in your hands. But these families were not invited to be part of the redistricting process for the last few months. This is clear discrimination against most of the residents of Alcohone and Rancho San Diego. We are not blaming you, but it looks like the people who are behind this have given you wrong information and have succeeded in shielding you from considering the well-being and aspiration of the majority of refugee communities in Alcohone. This has nothing to do with our African American brothers and sisters. We love them and serve them all, but we were simply not consulted and not involved in the whole process, and it's not fair. Thank you for listening to us now. Please keep both Alcohone and Rancho San Diego in East County. Thank you, and have a great day.
Followed by 4346.
Hello, my name is Chris Pierce. I ask you to please ask yourselves, how much time did your commission spend focusing on the needs of Spring Valley, a community of 65,420 that you're tearing apart, a community planning group, a county service area, and a fire protection district that you're chopping up between districts? Did you take the time to understand an underserved environmental justice community who doesn't have a voice, or did you listen to a special interest group with hundreds of followers spitting out the same monotonous script? Did you do your due diligence, and can you honestly say that you upheld your commitment to fairly represent all communities? For more context, please read my ecomments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 4346, followed by 8485. Press star six to unmute yourself. I see that you're unmuted. We should be able to hear you now.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brian Putrus. Alcohone is the heart of East County. It has become very clear that this initiative to take out Alcohone and Rancho San Diego of East County is the initiative of the far-left Democratic Party groups, which is why probably your advisors decided to shield, shield you guys from the main communities of interest in Alcohone, so you don't hear the feedback for months, or however long this has been going on. It looks like these far-left groups have succeeded in wearing you out for months without giving you the full truth, and now you are learning, and now you are leaning to making a decision without considering the people of Alcohone and Rancho San Diego, whose lives will be severely negatively impacted in Alcohone and Rancho San Diego, and are separated, if they are separated from East County. If the wrong process was followed, it will make your decision totally unfair, biased, and favoring only far-left groups. Thank you.
Thank you. 8485, followed by 4767.
My name is Arkan Sumo. I have been a resident of Alcohone for over 30 years, in both City of Alcohone and the unincorporated area, which known as Rancho San Diego. I really would like to start by expressing my deep appreciation for your service and your effort to comply with the law while doing your best effort to serve our communities and keep these communities of interest together. However, you see the process, you see the overwhelming testimony in every meeting you had in the last month, that if you divide City of Alcohone or Rancho from being a part of East County, you are disenfranchising a big communities. And I just, although I'm very proud member of the Chaldean community, but we have a lot of brothers and sisters, the Iraqi Muslim, the Iraqi Christian refugees, you will do that. And I heard some of the comment of one or two of the commissioner that Chaldeans were divided, because some individual went on some kind of interview who lives in Rancho, you know, Carlos, okay?
Thank you.
Speaking of Chaldeans in Alcohone.
Thank you. Your time has expired. I'll go to 4767, followed by 4004.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Marla Norm. I'm the president of the Neighborhood Market Association. I am a Chaldean American. We have 50,000 Chaldean Christian Americans who reside in what is now East County. A majority of those spread between mostly Rancho San Diego and Alcohone, which this committee is currently splitting in this map. But we also have many Chaldeans who have lived here for decades, spread throughout Hamul, Lakeside, Alpine, La Mesa, and Santee, what everyone here knows as East County. My grandparents live in Alcohone. Their kids went to school in Alcohone. They go to church in Rancho San Diego. Our, our community sees Alcohone and Rancho as synonymous with one another. I implore this committee to keep them together in East County. Thank you so much for your time.
Followed by Victoria Abrinika. 4004, press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Thank you for all your service, all this time that you have spent with us. And I know the Chaldean community just came about three weeks ago, has been introduced, because the honest truth, we did not know about this. We didn't find out about this whole thing until about three weeks ago. And you can see, we came and we showed, because we are a real community, you know, and I want to remind the commissioners that Rancho, if there is no city of Rancho San Diego, it's really Alcohone, because like even our church, it says Alcohone, California, it doesn't say Rancho San Diego. So this whole message that we had, that we said, keep Alcohone in the East County, was also referring to Rancho. Plus, you know, half of us, as we mentioned, live in Alcohone and Rancho, and the other half, we live in Lakeside, Santee, Alpine, all the way to Poway. And we have so many people in Poway that we even do masses in Poway. So please, keep them both part of East County. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Victoria Abrinika, followed by JP DeBerge.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Victoria Brennica. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a lifelong resident of Spring Valley. I'm the founder of the Spring Valley Cleanup Crew, serve on the Spring Valley Parks Board, and the Spring Valley Community Planning Group. I work here as an educator at one of our local public Title I schools, and I'm speaking in favor of Scenario 2. I pour as much of my time and energy back into Spring Valley, because I love my community and because we have very little resources and representation. and because we have very little resources and representation out here. As we talk about representation, I'm half Mexican and a half Filipino, and I'm the youngest woman on what I serve on. I would love to be represented by someone who looked like me and shared similar culture as me, but dividing Spring Valley isn't representation, it's blatant racism. Scenario 3A and 3B will only hurt my community, and I know this because I've lived here my entire life, and I can't imagine the heart of Spring Valley, the Spring Valley Park, the Spring Valley Swap Meet, the Spring Valley Library, Spring Valley Rec Center, and Community Center, where I learned to dance and play basketball. The school I went to as a child and currently work at no longer being represented with the rest of Spring Valley. We're all...
Thank you. 3848, followed by Spring Valley Skateboard, Skate Park. 3848, press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Ramon Mansour. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. I want to call, I want to say first of all, thank you for all your hard work, and I know this is the very end, and I know you guys are tired, and, but we really appreciate your time and your consideration. I'm very, I've lived in Alcohona my whole life. I've worked very well with the City of Alcohona, the City of Santee, all the fire departments over here. And when we first heard about this from the, you know, as a member of the Caldian community, we heard it first from our councilmen, councilmembers in the City of Alcohona, as well as Santee, even the mayor said, please, you guys can't let this happen. Do your best, keep this community together, don't let it fall apart. When you guys recently voted that Rancho belongs with the San Diego, I got a call yesterday from San Miguel Fire saying, this is ridiculous, it's impossible. Please, we need the Caldian community, we need everybody to call in and to support this, because you can't split up Alcohona and Rancho, and they have to stay in East County.
Thank you.
So we're begging you, please, keep us in East County.
Spring Valley Skate Park, followed by 5355.
Hi, my name is Christian Michael Gregorio. I represent the Spring Valley Skate Park Committee. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this. It already sounds very clear that we don't want our community, our community to be split up. Like, we need the community to stay together, whether, what color we are. I mean, in these times, like, we need to stay together, and that's what's going to show the future how to thrive. So, thank you. Please, we're picking Scenario Two. We need Spring Valley, we need Alcohona, we need East County to stay together, because our lives depend on it, our kids' lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. 5355, followed by Jesse Robles. 5355, press star, okay, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Louis Zaituna. I am a member of the Caldian community, Caldian American community. I was very hurtful on Thursday night to hear a representative of few far-left interest groups make racist statements against the Caldian community. I can assure you that Caldians love people of all race, religion, and sexual orientation. We do not discriminate against anyone. Our nonprofit organization in East County, based mainly in Alcohona and Rancho San Diego, serve all people of East County regardless of race, religion, and sexual orientation. We love all people. Unfortunately, this process has been mainly political and favoring only far-left. It had become clear that this initiative to take Alcohona and Rancho San Diego out of East County is the initiative of a far-left Democrat Party group. You are better than that. You need to be truly independent and unbiased. Please do not...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Jesse Robles, followed by JP The Burge.
Hello, my name is Jesse Robles, and I'm here to support Scenario Two. Please keep the community of interest Spring Valley, La Presa, and the unincorporated area west of State Route 125 together. As an elected representative for parts of this area, as a member of the Spring Valley Community Planning Group and a director for the San Miguel Consolidated Fire Protection District, I've seen that the La Presa-Spring Valley area is home to countless dedicated residents who have worked together for years to improve the community. This community has historically been a rural urban interface for the region, and splitting it would not only significantly marginalize residents that live here, but it does a disservice to both the people and the first responders that serve the community. Please keep our, it does a disservice for the first responders that serve the community by splitting our fire district across three supervisory districts. Again, separating this community would undercut the decades of work and progress made by residents to ensure this area continues to serve as an economic engine for the region, but also a destination for homeowners and businesses alike. Again, please keep the community of interest Spring Valley and La Presa and the area west of SR 125 together. Thank you.
JP The Burge, followed by T Salazar.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. My name is JP The Burge, and I'm the chair of the Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Town Council. And I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work that you've done over the last few months. I understand that this is a very difficult process. I understand that there are lots of different communities that are, that are trying to stay together. Our community was one of them, Harmony Grove and Elfin Forest, together with Eden Valley. And I want to thank you for keeping us whole within our planning group, which is very important for us in the unincorporated communities, to be able to advocate to our supervisor united as a group, as opposed to being split up, and also to allow us to stay whole within our fire district, the Rancho Santa Fe Fire District. Again, very important for us, having lost hundreds of homes in the last few decades, including, gosh, as long as five years ago. So thank you so much for keeping us together, and, you know, congratulations on working on accomplishing what you've accomplished. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. T Salazar, followed by TMD5.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Trevor Salazar. I'm speaking as a community member in Spring Valley. I would like to urge the council to choose the final working draft map Scenario Two, which keeps La Presa as part of Spring Valley. So much of the character of Spring Valley resides in that area, Swap Meet, the library, the recreation center, the park, it's called Spring Valley Park. It seems almost nonsensical to remove those facilities, who bear the name of the town, from the town. The cultural character of Spring Valley is neglected in this map, and it splits a longstanding neighborhood from its larger community, while Spring Valley is already a food desert with limited to nonexistent public transportation options, excuse me. Splitting it up, it is only going to detriment this area further, and really, we need as much resources and as many community members as possible. Because of this, again, I urge the council to choose Scenario Two instead of their choice. Thank you so much for your time. Are you...
Thank you. TMD5, followed by Josh Franco.
Yes, good afternoon. I have lived in the East County for one on 15 years and have been serving as a San Miguel Fire District Board Member since 2014. I just recently was made aware of the significant changes and echo concerns of many of the previous speakers. I appreciate the time the commission has put into this project, however, I respectfully disagree on two significant points. First, the proposed map would cause our fire district to fall into the leadership of three different district supervisors, districts one, two, and four. I find this problematic from a governing standpoint. When issues arise in our district and we seek support or input from our board supervisors, it presents a problem trying to get three supervisors to agree on certain opinions. I understand the commission made modifications to preserve Valley Center Fire, and I ask the same for San Miguel Fire District. Second, the proposed map makes a unilateral wedge from our largely Hispanic community in La Presa, and also bifurcates our Caldian community by pulling the Rancho San Diego area into District Four. If the goal of this commission is to keep the communities together, why choose to split any clearly established community? I do not believe the drastic changes being proposed in East County are in the best interest of our citizens.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Would you state your name if you'd like to appear in the public record? Okay, thank you. Josh Franco, followed by Tim Snyder.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Hello, Commissioner, thank you for all the hard work and dedication that you've put in over the past year. I think it's important to acknowledge that you as public servants have done a great service to the county. It's not common in the state of California yet for counties to allow for independent redistricting commissions to engage in the dialogue and discussion and debate that you guys have ensued upon, and I really appreciate the work that you've done. As a newer resident of San Diego County and the City of Alcohona, I can share that I've lived in several parts of the state and have traveled to almost every part of the state. And as you know, San Diego is a microcosm of that. Just like the Golden State, it's very complex and diverse, and I just want to share three things. The first one is that what we have in common will always be greater than what we don't have in common, and people may want to check their divisive language and focus on what brings people together, even if they are from different racial, ethnic, or linguistic backgrounds. Secondly, individuals and communities that work hard to build coalitions across racial, ethnic, linguistic, and socioeconomic backgrounds should be acknowledged for building those bridges and bonds, instead of looking inward or being insular. Thank you.
Tim Snyder. That will be our last virtual hand.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time this morning, this afternoon. Spring Valley, you're cutting the community planning group in half, and you're sending these two unincorporated halves into districts that are primarily incorporated areas. For CPA, that's a lose-lose situation. It's unfortunate that the commission has caved response to responding mostly to public pressure and not protecting an established, unincorporated, and heavily populated community planning area. Bottom line is, is that when we have to speak to one or more, to more than one supervisor's office, we have to get a lot of consensus to get things done. And we typically have been able to work with one supervisor, and a supervisor over a primarily unincorporated area, now we were going to have to speak to two supervisors who lord over two incorporated areas. It's going to make our jobs very difficult out there in Spring Valley. Please keep Spring Valley and La Mesa together. Thank you.
Thank you. Remaining hand is one that I called earlier, so that concludes remote testimony. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission who didn't do so earlier, you're welcome to come forward to the microphone at this time.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bame and members of the commission. My name is Vince Cattula, and I'm a Caldian community advocate. Let me start off by saying, Chairman Bame, out of all the public meetings I've ever been a part of or have seen, I have never seen anyone chair a meeting as well as you have, regardless of your motions and what you voted on. Very well done. Good job. Let me start off by saying that on the behalf of the Caldian community, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for hearing us on Alcohona, but our community is still divided, and our ask today is simple: keep Rancho San Diego and Alcohona in East County. There's still an opportunity for your commission to right this wrong. Adjust the map today, put Rancho in East County, and call for a special meeting tomorrow to finalize a map that leaves Alcohona and Rancho in East County. There'll be no more media, no more PRAs, and no lawsuits filed. Our legal team at this very moment is looking in what, is looking into what could potentially be multiple violations of your own bylaws, the Brown Act, Election Code, and Voting Rights Act. Our legal counsel is very strong and most recently beat the state of California to lift the COVID religious shutdowns and won $3 million in legal fees. If you're not going to do this for our community...
Thank you.
...do this for the taxpayers and save them what could potentially be tens of millions of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any further movement in the chamber. That concludes public testimony. Chairman Bame?
Thank you very much, David. I was going to say this towards the end, but I'm, I want to say it now. I've been gratified to hear a lot of very kind comments. I have the honor of chairing this commission. I'm not telling it what to do. I get a lot of credit for work that other commissioners do, and when it comes to discussion and hearing from the community, I hope all my fellow commissioners take any praise directed at any one commissioner as directed to all of us, because I've been impressed, amazed, and humbled by this team. So I just wanted to say that now. It really is touching, and I hope members of the public understand that when they're addressing one commissioner for making things work and work well, and hearing the public, they're saying it to all commissioners. With that, as this is an action item, and thank you to members of the public for your comment. It's always gratifying to hear those thoughts and how they relate to our, the map we have before us. As this is an action item, requiring a motion before discussion, is there a motion to approve, bear with me again, the resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, adopting a redistricting plan, adjusting the boundaries of the supervisory districts, as included with the agenda materials?
So move.
Commissioner Inman, second?
So move.
Commissioner Katerina, thank you. So we can have some discussion now. Again, I'll ask staff to put the map back up on the screen. And Commissioners, I know you're not tired, but this is a really good time for any final thoughts, any thoughts you've had since our last meeting, anything you'd like to address about the map and about this part of the process. Commissioner Ponce?
Yes, thanks to the public again for the outstanding comments and just giving us the insights and the feedback we need to make informed decisions. What I would like for Flo to do is to bring up each district of the map and discuss the lines of demarcation so they are clearly understood and illustrated to the public as we go through the final parts of this process. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponce, I find that a wonderful idea, and that's biased on my part, I admit, but is there any objection to doing that? Okay? And Commissioner, did you want to comment yourself or offer Commissioners a chance to comment? What would be your suggestion on that, as we work district by district?
Well, I mean, the Commissioners can chime in anytime they want, but I just want the public to understand what the lines of demarcation are and the indexes that go with those different districts.
And John, I'll ask you and Commissioner Inman, our single point of contact on these matters, to remain available too. But let's, if it's okay, we'll have staff just bring up district by district, those zoom-in pages, sorry.
Chair, if I may, it might be more efficient to have Flo do that component if they're available.
If they've got it available, John, does that work for you?
That works for me. Let me just share my screen and I'll pull up the web viewer.
Thank you, John.
You're very welcome. Let me see. And of course, I had the final meeting, have trouble sharing my screen again. This should do it. Great. All right. Well, let's start in District One. And I will start with the southwest corner of the county, which I believe is in the southwest corner of the City of Imperial Beach, and the District One boundary extends... John? Yes.
Right now, the screen we have is a very good picture of the southeastern part, or close to it, in Salton City.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah. It's one of the few maps I don't think we've ever looked at, so it's interesting to see. I'm not even sure where the Imperial County line is. I assume that's it.
I am going to, let's see, try this. How's that?
That works much better. Thank you.
I apologize. So, back to where I started. Southwest corner of the county, in the southwest corner of the City of Imperial Beach, that boundary extends along the international border east towards this area here, and this would be the southwestern border of the Hamul Planning, Community Plan Area as well. Boundary then extends northward. And, you know, I'm going to just go, if it's okay, I just want to put on some of these other layers, because I think that might help folks understand where things go.
Sure.
So let me put on the Community Plan Area. Put that one on as well. So you can see it generally is following the community, the OT Community Plan Area, where you see some deviation from these lines. That's where the census blocks don't align perfectly with the administrative boundaries. And so in some cases, it will deviate a little bit outside of those lines, but for the most part, we are trying to adhere to the OT Community Plan Area. Then moving up northwest, I believe this is going to be the, in towards the boundary of the eastern boundary, northeastern boundary, the City of Chula Vista. And then we have the Sweetwater Planning Area. Once again, another area where it doesn't quite, the census blocks don't quite follow the administrative boundaries. But then we go up into La Presa, the La Presa CDP, which is entirely located within District One, then down back into the CDP Benita, which is also included in District One, as is the entire City of Chula Vista, as well as the City of... As is the entire city of Chula Vista, as well as the city of National City. And the, uh, many of the southeastern San Diego neighborhoods, including the military facilities, Barrio Logan. And up into Greater Golden Hill. And then in downtown, this is the one area within the city of San Diego or one plan area in the city of San Diego that is split. It is split along the border of Front Street and Market Street. And this, I believe, is down towards the Convention Center as well. So that is District One. If we're good there, I guess I can move on to District Two. So District Two, and I'll, I'll, I'll start in the southwest corner again. And once again, this is going to be in the southwest corner of the Humul Planning Area. And that border is then going to extend eastward all the way to the southeast corner of the county, including, you know, many of the community plan areas, unincorporated community plan areas in the area. And at the corner, or at the southeast corner of the county border, it goes northward and follows for the most part the Mountain Empire Planning Area Boundary. And once again, we see a little bit of a deviation from the administrative boundaries in this area. And that is in part due to the block boundaries, but also I think this is part of the area that we discussed during the last meeting where there was, we had to make a, uh, there was going to be a split because of overlapping boundaries between the desert planning area and, and Mountain Empire. Um, I think I got that right. Um, and then we move up with the Pine Valley Planning Area, the Cuyamaca Planning Area, and Julian, where we have both the CDP and Julian Planning Area. Once again, we're incorporating most of that, uh, those planning areas, but the, of course, with the administrative boundaries and census blocks, you can't get them perfectly aligned. Moving west, we have the Ramona CDP as well as the Ramona Planning Area. Then into some of the unincorporated areas around the city of Escondido. Then moving south, we're following the, or moving into part of the San de Gito Planning Area. And then all of Rancho Bernardo, south down into the city of San Diego. And I'll zoom in so we can see the city of San Diego planning areas that are here. So we've got Carmel Mountain Ranch on the western border along with Saber Springs, Miramar Ranch North, and Scripps Miramar Ranch North. Uh, and then it captures all of the military facilities in this area. And then here we have the area that we discussed where, uh, with Kearney Mesa and Sarah Mesa with the, I believe, a convoy district over here being, uh, over in, um, not within District Two. And then the community of Tuerasanta and Navajo. And then, of course, the city of, uh, Alcoa down here in sort of the south, central, southern part of the district. Uh, it then wraps around and includes, uh, the Crest de Hessa Planning Area and then back in towards the Humul Planning Area. So that is a walkthrough of District Two. I'll now go to District Three, which is along the coast. So starting at the southern end of the city of Coronado, the district extends northward into the coastal areas of the city of San Diego. Uh, on the east, we have that section of the downtown planning area west of Front Street. The Reserve Planning Area, Mid Pacific Highway, Old Town San Diego. Then to the western end, um, the Peninsula Planning Area, which includes Point Loma, moving up to Ocean Beach, Mission Beach, Pacific Beach, La Jolla. The boundary for District Three moves a bit eastward as we, as we go north into the city, um, including the areas of University. And over to the, um, east, we have Mir Mesa and Rancho Peneosquitos and Black Mountain Ranch. And then over in the western area, we get into many of the coastal cities here, the city of Del Mar, Solana Beach, Encinitas, and Carlsbad in the northern portion. And the border then follows those cities' boundaries, uh, back around and south. And now that I'm thinking about it, I probably should have done this beforehand, but we'll go ahead and put on the municipal boundaries layer. Hopefully not getting too many layers on here. But that is District Three, so I'm going to move down now to District Four. I will start in the northwest corner of District Four, starting with Claremont Mesa. The boundary moves east to include that area of Kearney Mesa and the convoy district. Then south through, uh, part of Sarah Mesa. And then moving east, including all of Mission Valley, uh, College Area. And then the city of La Mesa into the Vaedora, Dora Planning Area and the Rancho San Diego CDP. All of the city of Lemon Grove. And then down south to include the city, uh, the Sandy, City of San Diego Planning Area of Skyline Paradise Hills. The boundary then moves a bit north, capturing the Encanto Neighborhoods. And, uh, then begins to go, uh, west to the, uh, mid-city heights area. To North Park, Balboa Park. And then northwest, the Up Down and Hillcrest, Old Town San Diego. And then Linda Vista, just north of that, till we finally get back to Claremont Mesa. And then lastly, uh, District Five in the north. So starting in the northwest corner of the district, we have the Pendleton, Camp Pendleton area, the Pendleton Duluth, uh, Community Plan Area. We'll go east and captures the, both the CDP and the planning area of Fallbrook, Ballbrook, as well as CDP and Planning Area of Rainbow, uh, through Palapauma and Palomar Mountain, capturing all of the North Mountain, uh, Planning Area. And then into what was a sort of late addition with the Borrego Springs and Desert Planning Areas. Uh, the boundary then moves south at the border of the county to where it meets the District Two Boundary at the border of the Mountain Empire. Um, and then once again, it moves west and then we have in this area here where, um, the boundaries don't align all that well with the census blocks. But we've done our best to include the majority of population in the plan areas in their appropriate district here. Then in, uh, comes in and I, and we, um, we do have an extension south of North Mountain here. This was, I believe, uh, done to capture portions of the Mesa Grande Indian Reservation here. The boundary then moves, um, west and north until it eventually moves into the city of Escondido. And it follows the municipal boundaries of the cities of, uh, Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, and Oceanside. Until it once again gets into the Camp Pendleton Area in the northwest corner of District Five. And, uh, that, that's my brief overview. If you'd like to zoom into any particular area, I can do that as well.
Well, John, thank you for that. Very useful and particularly timely, timely under this motion. Commissioner Inman?
Yes, thank you very much, John. And, uh, if you look at the reports, we only split one municipality, that was San Diego, and we had to because of its size. All other municipalities are whole in this, as well as as many as possible of the planning districts. We did try to follow planning district boundaries where appropriate and where we could. And, uh, that, uh, that is clearly shown as, uh, as John took you through. We also tried to accommodate fire protection districts. We tried to, uh, take into account public testimony in pulling, uh, various communities together. Um, and, uh, the result is kind of what you see.
Thank you for that. And again, thank you, Commissioner Inman, working as single point of contact for making all that happen as Flow Analytics was doing all their incredibly, incredibly detailed and challenging, frankly, technical work as demographers. With that, I want to ask commissioners one more time if anyone wants to take the floor. I'll ask Council if she has any comments she wants to make, but Commissioner Serbin, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
And again, rec, in recognizing the diversity of our community, I just want to say, Magandang hapun, say nyong lahat. Good afternoon to all of you. Today, I heard the public asking us to consider the following. There were three points that I heard. One, unify Alcoa and Rancho San Diego. Two, unify Spring Valley with La Presa. And three, consider maintaining the unity of black communities. And I'd like to reassure the public that this commission and my colleagues have devoted our full consideration to these issues. This is not the first time we've heard these concerns. And usually it would be at this point that I would, as is my custom, invite my colleagues to discuss how we might respond to today's public input. However, realistically, I don't have the sense that we can have such a conversation today. And so while I may not agree with the entirety of our decisions as captured by this final map, I certainly respect and accept the ultimate will of this commission. This map represents the best possible outcome, given our statutory criteria. And I'm confident that we've attempted to respond to public comment to the extent practicable. So with that, I again extend my thanks to my colleagues on the commission, our staff and contractors, and of course, to the organizers, community advocates, and members of the public for their meaningful engagement with our work. I've been honored to serve the public of this county this past year as an independent redistricting commission. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished. With that, thank you. Salama.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other requests for the floor before we move to a vote? Very good. So, uh, with that, I'm going to turn to the clerk for the vote, but I want to read the motion one more time. That this is, the commissioners, you'll be voting on a motion to approve the resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission adopting a redistricting plan, adjusting the boundaries of the supervisory districts as included with the agenda materials. With that, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Diaz is absent. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Dossel?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much, David. And thank you, commissioners. Yeah, that's a big deal. There's a little bit of applause under the table, but that's a big deal. That's good. Before we turn to the next agenda item, I have a suggestion, given that the incredibly hard, extensive, and long work that went into the final report, the subject of our next motion, of our next agenda item, arrived fairly late for those reasons. I wanted to suggest a recess, both for comfort, but also to give commissioners, and frankly, everyone, to have a chance to review the final report that you received a few hours ago. Given that it was only just formally circulated, it seems appropriate to give everyone an opportunity to review it one more time. I was going to call that recess on my own authority for about 15 minutes. I wanted to make sure there was no objection or no adjustments needed. Any comments from commissioners? Very good. So noting that the time is 3:11, we'll be reconvening at 3:26. We are in recess. Thank you. Staff, we can take the slide down. Taking my mask off if that's okay. Welcome back, commissioners. We are reconvening as scheduled at 3:26. Thanks for being back on time. Thanks again, members of the public who are still with us and continuing to observe and I hope in a little while participate in our proceedings. We'll turn now to Agenda Item Five, which is a discussion and possible approval of, I'll beg your indulgence again, the resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, adopting a final report concerning its final redistricting plan, adjusting the boundaries of the supervisory districts. The IRC's final report, which of course is required by law, was included in an email circulated just a few hours ago and posted on the website a few hours ago. Again, I want to thank staff, council and others for working as hard as they did to get this done. I'll also note that the report from the IRC's outreach contractor, Asian Business Association San Diego, on the results of the IRC's draft map public hearings was also included with the agenda materials. I note that because that's been an agenda item we've tabled, but it is folded into this report and this seems an appropriate time and circumstance to handle it. Now, as I said, there are a number of people to thank for helping put together this precise and complete report. Our council, our staff, many others. But perhaps the one person deserving the most things for a continuous engagement over the past few months, and all underlying months there on this report is Co-Vice Chair Garcia. I'd like to acknowledge how her tremendous work, long hours and intensive facilitation led to this great result. While the commission, of course, will take full responsibility for this report when it votes in a few minutes, it would be a terrible mistake not to express our gratitude to Rosette. Thank you very, very much. With that, Rosette, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame, and thank you for those kind words. There were really a lot of people working on this report, not least of which is staff, who had a very heavy lift over the last few days. So to Barbara, Nicole, Liberty, Keith and I don't know, probably some other people. We wouldn't have this report in front of us if they hadn't spent long hours into the night, I know, and over the weekend working on this. And in addition, Commissioner Inman, who coordinated all the demographic data that got dumped into the report, literally between Saturday and as recently as around noon or so today, maybe, maybe even later. Flo, Marguerite, she and I have spent a lot of time together working on this report. And then the commissioners, many of you who sent in comments, and I hope you noticed that we incorporated, I would say almost all of them, or have tried to. I want to point out and that this report has been brought to you in draft form all along the way. This is the fifth, you've seen it five times. And then this last time is the final report with all of the demographic data. All of the data that starts in the section called Final Plan that describes the map, the rationale, the, you know, the statistics. The rest of the report, I just want to reassure you that it comes from documents and reports and plans that we have already reviewed and in many cases approved. So there is nothing, I would say there is nothing substantially new or different or that departs from decisions and ideas and principles and priorities that the commission has already agreed to previously over the course of the last 12 months. So with that, I just, I know that it came late. We've, it was quite, we've been talking about how we've been building this plane while we're flying it while we were trying to land the plane with this final report. And I just want to say that I, just to carry the metaphor a little bit further, I don't think we crash landed it. I think we came in rather smoothly, thanks to a number of people. So with that, I will turn it back to Chair Bame. And if you have any questions or further comments, I think that we are open to making some minor edits, revisions, you know, some sort of technical things. Certainly if you've noticed some mistakes, absolutely, this is the time to bring them, to bring them up and we can still correct them because the report will be, we will live on the website. So those edits can be made and I'm, we're open to hearing about those. I'm sure, I'm sure some of you eagle eyes might have caught some. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dan Rosette, and I join in thanking everyone who contributed to this, including the commissioners. We'll have a chance for clarifying questions and comments as part of the discussion under the motion. But I'd like first to turn to requests from the public to speak. I'm going to summarize one that I got before this meeting from a younger resident of my house, who's homesick today from school, who heard me talking about final report, final report, final report all morning and late until last night. And when I told him it was done, he said, oh, you got it out? And I said, well, I didn't get out. Other people got it out. He said, okay, you get an A. So commissioners, so noted. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We have two speakers who have requested to address the commission in person and seven who have requested to address the commission remotely. I'll also check for members of the public requesting to speak by raising a virtual hand or physical hand. Each individual speaker on this item will be afforded one minute to address the commission. Groups will be afforded three minutes. And at this time, I ask all those participating remotely who wish to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. I'll begin with our in-person speakers. I'd like to invite forward Reverend Shane Harris and Prince Katula. They don't appear to be present, so I will go to our remote requests, beginning with Chris Pierce, followed by 7769.
Yes, again, my name is Chris Pierce. I just wanted to point out that on the next presentation of the districts, incorrectly stated that La Presa was a planning group. No such group exists. And they completely glanced over Spring Valley when describing your gerrymander district four. Do you know anything about Spring Valley or even where it's located? Please do your due diligence and don't ignore us.
Thank you. I'll go to 7769. That's the last virtual hand I have. And again, whether you have submitted an advanced request or not, if you wish to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time.
Any change need to be on the record? Period.
I'm sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Just one moment, please.
I'll ask the public speaker to hold one moment. Counsel, was that you weighing about on the record?
I am so sorry. I thought I was muted, but I'll say what I was going to say eventually. That if there are changes, it would be good to list them on the record. So everybody knows what they're, they're voting for. So the recommendation was just to keep a list.
David, please, and I apologize to the member of the public.
Thank you. 7769, followed by Nora Barca.
Hi, yes, my name's Molly Sylvester and I am unfortunately out in Florida, so I kind of missed part of it. I can't see the map. I just want to make sure that El Cajon remains with East County and that Rancho San Diego is included with that. Consider our fire services, what they have to entail to stay within those boundaries. And that's what I wanted to say on that. And if you're discussing flavored tobacco ban tonight, I would like to remind you that it is harm reduction product that saves millions of lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora Barca, followed by Uday Youssef. Nori Barca, you need to unmute yourself. I'm still showing you as being muted.
Okay, I did. Nori Barca, Caldian Community Council. Basically, I just want to send you a message that the Caldian and all the Middle Eastern and El Cajon are united, Muslims, Christian, Arab. We are very much in one support hand that we want to have El Cajon and Rancho a part of East County and there is no division between us. And this morning, the Imam of Ali Masjid Islamic Center of Lakeside sent you a comment on that. So please consider us, there is no, we are all one hand, we are all working together in support of keeping El Cajon and Rancho in East County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uday Youssef, followed by Victoria Abernica.
Uday Youssef, I serve as the chairman of the Valadiero Community Planning Group, but I speak in my individual capacity today and not as a representative of the group. I am also a Caldian American and I do support I am also a Caldian American, and I do support keeping Rancho San Diego and El Cajon together. However, whether keeping them together be in that, in the East County District or the more central district, but as long as they are together, it doesn't matter if they're in the eastern district or western district to me. I'd also like to say that the Caldian community is not a monolith. One person or one group does not speak for all of us. We do not all agree. There is not a unanimous consent amongst the community for one position or the other. No one person can speak for an entire ethnic minority, and despite many speaking for one position, there are plenty of more who speak for the other position. The Caldian community is an ancient ethnic group, and not one person can be their leader or spokesperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Abernica.
Hello, I'm speaking again in favor of scenario two. Scenario three A and three B will only hurt Spring Valley. I know this because I've lived here my entire life, and I can't imagine the heart of Spring Valley, which is the Spring Valley Park, the Spring Valley Swap Meet, the Spring Valley Library, Rec Center and Community Center, where I learned to dance and play basketball, the school I went to as a child, and the school I am currently working at, no longer being represented by the rest of Spring Valley. We're already unincorporated and live in a food desert and have awful public transportation office options. Please don't make us have to live with this for the next 10 years. Again, I am speaking here in favor of scenario two in hopes of keeping my community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner, so what Dr. Nuri was talking about just a while ago, what the Imam, this is the leader of the Islam. He said, and I want you to read this comment, he put it in public, "We are the community of Imam Ali Masal Islamic Center of Lakeside, San Diego. We are part of the Middle Eastern community that live most in east counties, El Cajon, Rancho, San Diego, Lakeside, and Santee. We are united as one community with Iraqi Christians, Caldian Assyrians, and others. We urge you to keep our community together in one district that includes El Cajon, Rancho, San Diego, Lakeside, and Santee." So this is the leader. You know, there's all these misconceptions that they're talking about us, but as you can see, this is the leader of the Islam. We work all together. Please do not let them, their political agendas drive your decisions. We are a community of interest for 50 years. We wouldn't be working as hard if we didn't. It's just we had a short time, three weeks, to prepare for this, and we're not politicians. We are actually a community.
Thank you.
Thank you, God bless.
Do you wish to state your name for the public record?
Yes, sir, it's Jeff Mansour.
Thank you. That concludes remote testimony. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item, whether or not you have submitted an advanced request, you're welcome to come forward to the microphone at that, this time. Not seeing any movement in the chamber, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, David. As this is an action item requiring a motion before discussion, is there a motion to approve, and I will read this once again, "The Resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, adopting a final report concerning its final redistricting plan, adjusting the boundaries of the supervisory districts as included with the agenda materials." Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Larson, second Commissioner Chen. Thank you very much. Thank you for having the motion on the screen. I already have Commissioners Brown, Russ, and Krugliak. Any commissioners wish to request the floor at this time? Very good. Commissioner Brown, please go ahead.
Okay, I say bravo on that report. It is absolutely beautiful job. So thank you so much for taking it all the way through and making it a wonderful presentation for us. I wanted to thank the staff and all the commissioners who've participated with that, as well as those that, over the last year, have participated in some way or the other in the culmination of that final report. And the contractors and council, and especially Rosette, who I know was there in the forefront, leading the game. So for me, it was, it was, seemed, appeared very complete. It was very easy to read, well organized, had great appearance. They, they talk about white space, it was wonderful for that. And the referencing all seemed very appropriate where things were placed. So bravo.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Russ.
Yeah, that's an excellent job that, that everybody did. Very, very, very good. One of the things I, I don't know why I didn't think about it, I gave a couple of chops on it, but, and I don't think this would be very difficult, but you know, we don't mention anything about our budget. That might be of interest to the public, it might be of interest to, you know, the future commission, you know, what we spent the money on, things like that. And I don't think it would be a big, I think it would just be an insert into a paragraph in the main body and then a reference to the appendix, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't have something about the budget in there.
That is an excellent idea, Commissioner Russ, and I believe that it would be easy to add a sentence or two about, about the fact that we had a budget, and then we could, in the appendix, add, refer, refer people to the appendix.
Yeah, I think that'd be the place to put it. I think, I think just make it an appendix and some reference in the body of the report. But, but very well done, Rosette.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Krugliak, and then we'll come back to exactly how we might pursue that. But please go ahead, Kristin.
What a, what a beautiful report. Really, really well done. I have a couple, I was going to ask how to get comments to you, but since Marguerite suggested that we keep it on the record, I have just a couple of minor, minor suggestions or recommended changes. One, on page 14, Dr. Maswoka's last name is misspelled, it has a T in it, so if we could correct that. In district number one, in cases where, in three cases where we talk about whether a region is divided or not, when it is false, the reason for division is entered as zero, where it should be blank, if we could just remove those three zeros. In the table that, of district four, where it describes the, the last table in that district, which I believe is on page 51, when it talks about the unincorporated area, you're going to kill me, Rosette, but the table's header, every other table in the report is colored, the header is colored orange, and that one is blank, so if we could get the color unified throughout, that would be great. Because it did go over a year, the other thing that I would suggest is anytime we have a date, if we do include the year, oftentimes we just include the month in the date, but just to remove any possible ambiguity, I think adding the year would just be helpful. And then the last comment is more of a question, which is how, I realized that lessons learned are going to be something different from this report. Have we laid out precisely what the deliverable for that is going to be and how we are going to finalize that other piece as well?
And we will definitely make amendments, revisions to the document for that. With regards to the lessons learned document, I'm going to turn that over to Chair Bame.
With regard to how it's anticipated in this report in different places, I'm actually fairly comfortable with the level of detail in this report. There's at least one explicit reference to it, if I remember right, to the lessons learned. Maybe two, actually, in the final.
What we mentioned that is our plan, it has always been our plan to provide a lessons learned report, yes.
And in the next, very next agenda item, Commissioner Krugliak, as always, you're ahead of me, we will discuss exactly how we're going to put that plan together. So thank you for those comments.
And Commissioner Russ, I'm, I'm looking here, and just so that the commission can be aware, there is a section called, in the, in the introduction, "Priorities of the IRC and Preparation for the Redistricting Process," and I think that would be an obvious place to add in some information about the fact that we had a budget and, and then refer readers to an appendix that would provide some more detail.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. And, and of course, we had to go back and ask for more funds, too, so I don't know if that needs to be put in there, but I'll leave that to your placement there, Rosette. Thank you.
And I'm working, I'm not sure if I emphasized enough how much Marguerite has been involved in helping with the development of this document and reviewing it, and so I will definitely be working with her to make sure that we capture everything appropriately. And then I just, actually, there were a couple of edits that did not make it into this last version, and let me just point them out. It's on page, it's in the, it's on, at the top of page six, and it's in this, I'm sorry, top of page seven, in the section called "Establishment of the Independent Redistricting Commission." And I don't expect anybody to remember this, but it was a much, that section was a much shorter paragraph that basically said that the county had placed the responsibility for drawing lines with the IRC. And then that this section was fleshed out, that, as you can see now, it starts, it basically provides a history of the legislation beginning in 2012. And over the different iterations, that statement about the fact that the responsibility for drawing the lines is now in the hands of the IRC somehow got dropped. So I am suggesting that we add that back in at the end of the paragraph, where it basically says, it's the last sentence, "California Elections Code Sections, blah, 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 now set forth the rules and procedures for redrawing the supervisory district boundaries of the County of San Diego," and place that responsibility with the IRC, so that it's very clear and it's stated there, because that particular statement somehow got dropped, dropped off. And then one other minor, minor change that was suggested by, actually by Commissioner Russ, is on page eight, and it's under this paragraph called "Other Considerations," and it's the second sentence, "Release of census data was delayed initially," and then it has a date, at the, near the end, it says, "From August 15th to December 15th," and then it says, comma, "CAB 1276 Bonta, Chapter 90 Statutes of 2020." The suggestion there was to footnote the CAB 1276, just for easier reading, and we had, that was a revision, an edit that was supposed to have been made that didn't make it into this. So we would add a footnote right after December 15th, 2021, period, that would end the sentence, and then the footnote at the bottom of the page. So a couple of minor edit. I think that was it. Thank you.
Thanks for reading that into the record, not just you, co-Vice Chair Garcia, but everyone, and Commissioner Krugliak, thanks in particular for those comments again. I want to turn to council now to figure out, the budget matter is a relative, is an important one. It's certainly one we spend enough time on. And procedurally, I just want to check, Marguerite, if we're making changes to the plan or whether we need to proceed with an amendment or a suspension of the item. We have time to do this, and I think we all will want to do it and do it right. And if it goes wrong or if it takes too long, it's Commissioner Russ's fault. But with that, Marguerite, can I give you the floor to give us some advice on this?
This is reminding me of live scenario modeling, so I think it's just great. To ensure that everybody's on the same page about what we're voting on, Chair, if I may be so bold, would you be amenable to suspending this item? The changes are manageable, let's get them made, bring them back, look at them, and then take the vote. I think that everybody would then know what the changes were, and the record would be clear about what the commission approved. And I think we have other items, we can move on and continue doing business.
Right. So, Marguerite, you're suggesting a motion to table this agenda item until we have that language ready, or to suspend the rules and do it right now?
Well, I would, I would suggest that we just table it to a little bit later on in the meeting and then retake up the item. And after we go through, I think we have a couple other agenda items, then come back.
We do. Yeah, and they, and they lend themselves to that kind of process. So, Mr. Clerk, do we need to take a motion and vote on tabling this agenda item until the next agenda item, or how?
Let's go, let's go ahead and do that, and just so it's clear, and then we'll take it off the table later.
Very good. So commissioners, what we're going to do is table the current discussion of the motion under Agenda Item Five, and I'm going to take them, ask for a motion to this effect in a moment, until we have completed the next agenda item, Agenda Item Six, which will involve both the resolution you've heard about, and as I hinted to Commissioner Krugliak, what we may do as a result of having that extension for additional virtual meetings, teleconference meetings in, frankly, in January. So for right now, though, what I'm asking for is a motion to table the current discussion of Agenda Item Five until the completion of Agenda Item Six. Do you have a commissioner willing to make that motion? Commissioner Chen, again, thank you. Commissioner Inman, I'll take you as the second. Any discussion? Very good. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz is absent. Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Arson?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner, co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, David, and thank you, commissioners. So, we turn to Agenda Item Six, which I hope will be useful for the commission and for the public. This is a discussion and possible approval of the Resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953. We are considering this item before our current resolution for authorizing such meetings expires on January 2nd. But I want to encourage the commission to consider that we may be doing so with specific attention to a possible lessons learned special meeting that we might hold on January 12th. And I'll discuss that suggestion with you in just a moment. Before I do that, David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Not in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the resolution authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings, you're welcome to do so. Those present who wish to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to come to the microphone. Those participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand. And again, if you're raising a virtual hand for another topic, you may want to lower your virtual hand before we have this discussion. I'm going to move to Steve Batia. You have one minute to address the commission on the continuance of teleconference public If you do wish to address the commission, you'll need to unmute yourself. I'm going to go ahead and move on. I don't see any other virtual hands and no movement in the chamber, so that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Thank you, David. As this is an action item requiring a motion before discussion, do we have a motion for approval of, and I need to read it once more for the record, "The Resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 as included with the agenda materials." Commissioner Serbin, thank you. Do you have a second? Commissioner Brown, thank you, thank you. Very good. Before opening discussion, let me remind commissioners one key advantage in approving this resolution now. I know this commission, from the beginning, has attached great importance to capturing lessons learned. I recall strong interest by the entire commission to take full advantage of that process, which was described several weeks ago, that staff worked to establish with Commissioner Pons and others. We remain indebted, in particular to Commissioner Pons, but I think also to all commissioners who contributed to that discussion for the energy and wisdom to capture and report on this important work. I also recall that commissioners had interest in discussing lessons learned more formally after we had met our statutory deadlines. after we had met our statutory deadlines. So I'd like Commissioners to consider, as part of this motion, the possibility of an all-virtual special meeting focused on lessons learned that could be held on Wednesday, January 12th, at 5:30 PM. Any discussion from Commissioners about this resolution or about that plan? I'm not asking for commitments at this time to that date and time, I'll ask staff to follow up on that as we go, if that's so approved, but that's my current intention. And if we do it on January 12th, we can do it under the resolution we're passing today. Any comments or discussion? Commissioner Krugliak?
If we have a discussion on the 12th, do we think that we would have a deliverable on the same day to approve, or would that necessitate a follow-up meeting to approve whatever we discuss and want to solidify and make final?
It's a good question. My hope would be that we could approve it that day, but between the holiday period, and I know several Commissioners have collected their thoughts for lessons learned, but haven't submitted them yet, I think we'll just need to see where we are. Certainly, we could also, that day, if needed, pass another resolution that would authorize another meeting a little later. So all the more reason to pass this resolution tonight, and I think we'll see in good faith where we are. That answers your question. Commissioner Serbin?
So, is the purpose of this upcoming meeting, or this proposed meeting, for us to discuss lessons learned, such that we can come to an agreement as to what the lessons learned are?
My anticipation would be either a collection in the form of a report, or at least a collection from the, the software tools that we have, to put that before the commission, or if necessary, to formulate that in a little more concrete detail, so we could have a follow-up discussion. Now, I should say, by scheduling a meeting at about that time, if there are any questions related to the map, in particular from our partners in the registrar voters, as they begin their important work, now that we've adopted a map, that's not a bad opportunity to be able to address some of those kind of technical questions. I don't want to anticipate that, it really comes down to what the registrar voter's office sees, but it's certainly a good opportunity for us to be together, because it comes relatively early in the process.
So, so prior to the meeting, should we, should individual Commissioners submit their suggested lessons learned through the process that we had established?
Yes, I don't, I don't intend to wander too far away from the resolution under this agenda item, but it would certainly be something where I would ask staff to be in touch with Commissioners, to start collecting those lessons learned within the software that we have, or if for some reason something else needs to be done, to be in touch with staff. And the officers and I can move ahead in finding the best way to capture that, move it along, correct any issues, and prepare for the best possible meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have a little concern with what I think I may have just heard, that we are going to approve lessons learned. Hopefully, we won't be going into a discussion about which lessons learned we can all agree on, and have approval from that perspective. So my, my hope would be that we all submit lessons learned, we may review and discuss them, but that this will not be an exercise in trying to all come to agreement on which particular lessons learned we think we should include.
Commissioner Chen, I more than understand, and I would never dream to debate you on such matters. It's a very good point. And Commissioners, I think all of us have a good idea of where the most common ground is, but I'll leave the door open for the possibility that there could be ideas or comments submitted in addition to the ones that are agreed as an annex, and identified by individual Commissioners.
So I can certainly see us having categories of lessons learned, unanimous, lessons learned, and others.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And I would frankly try to minimize the number of votes. It would be the unanimous ones, and then maybe majority ones, maybe ones where one Commissioner says, this sounds good to me, and others could sign up. We'll see.
Thank you for setting expectations.
It's a very, no, it's a good point, and I'm glad to be bringing it up under this item, because it gives us an idea of what to plan for, and whether we will indeed need to know the resolution. Commissioner Pons, I was hoping you would have your hand up. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thanks, Chair Beam. I would recommend setting the 12th as the due date for inputs, and then working forward seven days later, to give the staff a chance to go through those inputs, to either line through or combine similar inputs, and de-conflict any inputs that may be similar, but still have a different sort of context to it. And so I would, I just think, you know, just having the date of review and discussion and decision on the same day would be sort of counterproductive. So I'd recommend the 12th as the due date, because you have, we have a year's worth of lessons learned to bring together and to put them into words very cogently and concisely. And then after that, looking at the 19th, for us to review them together and collectively and make a decision on those. Because we have the framework, it's a DOT MELO PFPF framework, and if that framework works for everybody else, then we have that framework. And it's a matter of just sifting through the inputs and figuring out what to do with each one of those inputs.
Okay. And I apologize for inspiring this discussion, which is fairly broad from the agenda item before us. With the commission's permission, what I'd ask is, because again, if we meet later than one month from this resolution being passed, we will need another resolution. So however we meet, and whenever we meet, let's keep all that in mind, and staff will be in touch on the best way forward on this. Okay? Thank you. So with that, we are about to vote on the motion before us. I'll ask staff if they have it available to put up on the screen, and survey Commissioners one more time to see if they have any comment on the resolution itself. I'll go ahead and just read. The motion will be to approve the Resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings pursuant to Government Codes Section 54953, as it was included in the agenda materials. With that, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Beam. Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Chair Beam?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz is absent, Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
The motion passes with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Commissioners. And again, for the record, I just want to be clear, the entire discussion about lessons learned was with regard to what we might need for a January 12th meeting that's directly related to the resolution at hand. It was just a supporting point for that. Very good. So, David, am I correct that we now return to Agenda Item Five, because we've completed Agenda Item Six?
You can, you could take that item from the table in any order that you wish at this point.
Very good. So we now return to Item Five? Nope, not yet, sorry. Ah, one more minute, okay, very good. So, we go back and forward to Agenda Item Seven. That is a discussion and possible approval of an amendment to the IRC bylaws, just when you thought it was safe to get away from bylaws, concerning minor technical changes to the 2021 redistricting plan. I will note that the text of the proposed amendment, which in all seriousness is very important to consider, was included with today's agenda materials. For this item, we will begin with comments from Marguerite Leoni, IRCA Council. Marguerite, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chair. The amendment is intended to facilitate implementation of your plan. I think Flo has done a great job in scrubbing it, but I've never been involved in a redistricting where there's not a little technical glitch. As I've explained before, a census block boundary that cuts through the backyard of a house that wasn't there when the census was taken. What this would allow to be done is for those types of amendments, so long as they have zero population, to be approved by the officers, but subject to your ratification. So we have it in that order, so that a sense of propriety can be provided to the registrar, and we may be getting in touch with you quickly to get your ratification for, for the amendments. The reason the special meeting, and here I go off, a little bit off script two, would be on the 12th, is to bring those back to you as soon as possible, because the registrar is going to be working on implementation right away. And so the approval would be limited to technical amendments involving no population and consistent with your intent. So, for example, you may have a zero population change that is contrary to the intent of the commission, such as the fire district we just unified into, into District Five. So it would be two, two criteria, zero population and intent, subject to commission ratification. That could all be back to you on the 12th, but in the meantime, the registrar could continue to get ready to make all of those changes with some sense from the officers, who I assume will consult with the SPOC on the impact of the proposed change on intent. So this is simply to facilitate implementation of your plan. Questions?
Thank you for that. Clarifying questions or comments to council, before we go to public comment. Commissioner Krugliak?
I don't know if this question over council or for Flo, but does that zero, like firm zero population seem overly strict? I mean, if there was a district, a, a region that had a population of one or two, or something like that, suddenly it is no longer counted, even though it's negligible as well, is not contrary to the will of the commission. And what would that trigger if it were such a case? If it's not covered by the bylaws?
Marguerite, do you want to take that, or do you want me?
Yeah, I didn't know, I thought that was for John. You know, how I generally draft these is de minimis population. I wanted to keep the drafting narrow because of the importance of your commission's involvement. And I drafted it very, very, very narrowly. The commission, since it will have ultimate ratification approval, could certainly increase that and say no more than 25 people, or no more than 10 people, and then it would come back for ratification. So that's certainly available. Commissioner Krugliak, I do have some concern, though, that it changes the populations ever so slightly in the districts. It changes counts, but not percentages. So as a legal matter, I'm a little more comfortable with zero on a go-forward basis, and that's why I proposed it.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And if the proposal was for something that affected one or two, it just couldn't be approved by the Chair and Vice Chairs individually, it would necessitate a meeting?
Well, yeah, it, there needs to be a ratification in any case, and I am concerned with our deadline. We have to do our plan by tomorrow. And, you know, a plan with a technical change, there are amendments to official documents all the time, to correct typos and fix little glitches, but when we start moving people, I have a concern. So my recommendation is that we keep it at zero, and it come back, comes back to you in our January meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Council. So, the language of the amendment, is it as presented in Item Seven of the agenda?
That's a proposal subject to revision, Commissioner Serbin.
Okay, so I'm reading that to be, to start from authorize the commission's officers, and then, and then the following language would be the amendment, right?
Yeah, the whole amendment is after the section number. So I think it says Section 5.7, I haven't pulled it up here.
All right, so I guess what I'm wondering is, I don't, do we want to consider adding, you, you've mentioned that this, that these would involve either no or de minimis population. I don't see language to that effect in the proposed amendment. Do we, is that, do we want to include that?
There, hold on, let me pull it up, and that's a typo, it should be no population.
Sorry, looking at the wrong thing here.
Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you. It could as easily have been me, Commissioner Serbin, we've done a lot of work in the last four days. And such amendments do not involve any population, or change the intent of the plan as adopted.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I was looking at the totally wrong thing. Yeah, okay, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. And I apologize, Commissioner, I should have asked for this to be, to be displayed on the screen earlier, staff is working to bring it up right now, and just by magic, there they go. So, we will have a chance to discuss this among ourselves as a commission, but let me make sure there are no more requests for clarifying questions or comments to council. Seeing none, David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Chair Beam, not in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on the amendment to the bylaws, you're welcome to do so. If you're present would like to address the commission, please come forward to the microphone. If you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. Steve Matia, do you wish to address the commission on the amendment of the bylaws? If you do, please unmute yourself. Not seeing him unmute himself, that concludes public comment, Chair Beam.
Thank you, David. As this is an action item requiring a motion before discussion, is there a motion to approve that the bylaws and operating procedures of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission be amended to add Section 5.07 to Article Five, addressing the authority of officers regarding final redistricting plan, as included with the agenda materials? So moved. Commissioner Serbin, thank you, second?
Second.
Mr. Chen, thank you, thank you. Discussion. Any Commissioners wishing to speak on this? I just want to make one comment on it, that I realize we're asking Commissioners to put some trust for the sake of efficiency in the officers moving this forward. I pledged to you that we, if there's any doubt about the need to come back to the commission, we'll do so, we will lean in that direction. If this amendment is not approved, though, I would ask the commission to be ready for a special meeting to be summoned, maybe even before the 12th, because if something comes up that requires that degree of urgency, I'm sure we'd all want to make sure we're doing our part to get those fixes, those technical adjustments made as quickly as possible. So it's really just a question for the commission, I'm honestly happy either way. But if it's not passed, I will take that to mean the commission is willing to make itself available on short notice for any technical adjustments that are required. For my part, I'll be voting for the amendment, partly to, for the sake of efficiency, and partly because I think it enshrines the idea that at a certain level, as council presented and as Commissioner Serbin mentioned, it provides a way for when we are going to have the full commission not only ratifying something, but discussing it. With that, not seeing any other requests for the floor. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Beam. Commissioner Diaz is absent. Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Chair Beam?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes with all Commissioners. Motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye. Chairbeam?
Thank you very much, commissioners, and thank you, David. Much appreciated. And now, in Co-Vice Chair Garcia continuing attempt to help us understand what she's been going through for the past several months, we return to item five and the language that we've been discussing regarding.
Chairbeam, I don't mean to overcomplicate.
Yes, you do.
But, yeah. I would advise that we take a motion to take the item from the table. That you entertain a motion to take the item from the table.
Okay, very good. I, do I have a motion to take item five from the table and reopen discussion on it?
So moved.
Commissioner Chen, thank you very much. Commissioner Servin, thank you very much. Any discussion, seeing none. David, would you please call the roll for a vote? And it is appreciated, David.
Thank you. Chairbeam?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ? Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz is absent. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kruglia?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
The motion passes with all commissioners being present voting aye, who are present voting aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And in all seriousness, David, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Thank you, Chairbeam. And yet again, our staff comes to the rescue. I think we have a slide to show the language that we would add. Oh, you have a whole report. Of course they do. So can we, can we advance to, I think it would be page six or seven, right? Oh, okay.
And, and it's probably a good idea. Um, I'll look for counsel's enthusiastic nodding, uh, that we display these changes, both so that we understand them and the public understands them, and we can clearly make sure they did what was intended. Nothing against staff. I'm sure they're doing great on it. But this is, as you're seeing, it's a very complex exercise. So thank you, staff, for that, and thanks for the idea. I think it's a good one. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, you agree?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
So there, um, we have a very, um, minor edit there. We're adding an Oxford comma between the name Nicole Villa and Letitia Montoya. Is that the only, the, yeah. And then that was the language that I described earlier, where we add placing the responsibility for redistricting with the IRC. Now, I believe I'm suggesting that we follow right, in a new paragraph, right after that, with the, um, information about the budget. Did we, did you all add it somewhere else? Okay, well, let's see what it looks like there. There, there's the footnote change. And can we go through that a little bit more? Yeah, there's the footnote change. Thank you. And then, so I actually think it goes better under the topic that is establishment of the IRC, because it's related to the establishment of the IRC. So I would move it back up.
Where's the?
Right there. Yeah.
Where's the section it was in was other considerations?
Considerations. We were talking about the pandemic and yes. So the language reads to comply with the California Elections Code, which requires the Board of Supervisors to provide for reasonable funding and staffing. On October 13th, the Board of Supervisors established appropriations as a preliminary budget. Um, on January 28th, the IRC approved a line item budget, and on May 13th, the IRC requested a budget increase. And then at the end, it says the IRC budget can be found as Appendix 18.
Before we leave that, um, let's leave it on the screen right now because it's fresh in everyone's mind. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, did you want to say more about the meanings in here or anything with regard beyond the language? Or did you just want to read the language?
I just wanted to read the language. I was, I think that we're, I mean, it, it clears up that omission that Commissioner Russ pointed out. And, um, we've already, Marguerite has already looked at it. And, um, she, I, I don't want to speak for her, so if she wants to weigh in, I, but I understand that she thought that this language was appropriate.
Commissioner Russ, I want, I'm sorry, go ahead, Marguerite. Go ahead.
I did, Commissioner Garcia, um, I did approve this language, but doesn't mean I won't approve some modifications.
Okay.
She definitely.
She said, no, she said she, in other words, she would, if, if commissioners have, um, modifications they like to make, it, there, we're certainly open to that. And I see Commissioner Larson has his hand up.
Commissioner Larson, please.
Yes, uh, thank you for this change. Uh, one thing I'd like to see added is that we did have a ad hoc committee established, which did review the budget, the history of the budget, and recommended a budget. So that would go in there before the, uh, May 13th entry.
Uh, and on May 13th, 2021, upon recommendation of the Budget Ad Hoc Committee, something like that?
Yes.
The IRC requested. Okay. Thank you.
That's an excellent change from my perspective. Uh, counsel, any comment?
Um, I agree. Excellent change and a good addition.
And then were there any other edits that, uh, we needed to show? Or did you?
Yeah.
Chairbeam?
I just wanted to say first, uh, thanks to you, Rosette, but Jack and Arf in particular, Commissioners Larson and Russ, thank you very much for both the suggestion of this paragraph and for that change, Commissioner Larson. It's, it's good to refer to that and recalls the hard work that that ad hoc committee did. I want to specifically note that while we had an initial budget in this incredibly complex time, we were able to put together, not least thanks to the work of the ad hoc committee, a fully justified budget increase, especially with regard to IT needs and translation and interpretation services that were done explicitly, and I think with the commission's full will for the benefit of the public. I would also note that the monies herein also reflect our decisions, I think and hope as good stewards of public funds, to look for efficiencies wherever we could and to draw on the staff that we've had and the processes that we've had to save the county some money, rather than just hiring here, there, and everywhere, or otherwise pursuing projects or channels or directives that could have proven much more costly. I think the, the cost efficiency here is another proud point for this commission. And I say that not taking any credit for whatsoever. I thank commissioners for it, and in particular, I thank the members of the ad hoc committee. Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Sherbin.
I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't add a little something in there too about the fact that we have the budget from, um, provided to us each month for our review as a committee and our approval as a committee, um, so that they can understand that we weren't just looking at it once or twice during the whole year, that we had a firm grip on it. So maybe, um, like just before the, on January 28th. Yeah, that would be fine, monthly basis. It may need to go in a different spot. I would say maybe somewhere at the end, yes. If, if, if in fact we need it, but, uh, that's fine. Great. Thank you.
Counsel, any comment on that?
Uh, no, no legal comment in, on that at all. That's appropriate.
And Commissioner Brown, thank you. Cause it, it is useful that we were doing that regularly. I know sometimes we had to postpone it. But it doesn't mean we weren't aware of it or paying attention to it. And it is also to the credit of staff, not only to be preparing that monthly update, but on several occasions, being able to brief commissioners or officers on very short notice about where things stood. There's a lot that happens behind the scenes. And again, it's all done very, very well with efficiency and cost savings in mind for public monies. So thanks for that. Commissioner Brown, thank you very much for adding that. Commissioner Servin?
Thank you, Chairbeam. And thank you to, uh, to the commission, and especially, of course, Commissioner Garcia for all the incredible work on this report. It's really amazing, and thank you for doing all of it because it's a lot. I wanted to ask for the, in the introduction section, is it, can we, should we consider maybe, um, uh, putting a table that would, um, just quickly, um, communicate to the public the change, the delta in population between 2010 and 2020? And I, I ask that because, you know, that is, that's really what's driving our work here is that population change. And I just would like, it would be nice to just kind of be able to see, like, um, you know, that, that, that population change delta in, in the past decade, because that, that really does, um, substantiate the, the need for us to do this work. So I think that might be a, an interesting, a useful addition.
Commissioner Servin, that's a really good point. I'm, I'm going to ask Ashley, Commissioner Inman, if he wants to respond to that, because he's been dealing so much with the numbers.
Yeah.
And, and I'm wondering if maybe, I, I think that is a very, um, important piece of information that isn't in here. You're right. And, but I'm wondering if it goes in the area, you know, with the final plan.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly where to put it. But, and, and actually, I think like Flo already has this data. I'm looking at just like their prior materials that they've given us. So I'm sure, you know, we don't have to recreate the wheel or anything. It's just already, we can find it somewhere.
I mean, I would, I think in the introduction is appropriate.
Even just a sentence that says there was a six point, whatever percent increase, increase in population over the last decade?
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
So can we go, yes. Oh, you want that table?
Yeah, I mean, some, like, something like this, maybe. I don't know.
Before the map?
We could put that in.
In the appendix.
Okay. Yeah.
That's where I would insert.
Because Commissioner Servin, on page six, there's reference to the previous map adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2011 can be found in Appendix Two. And my suggestion would be as long as we've got the right sentence in the introduction. Um, maybe even there, maybe a little farther down, although that's more about IRC, isn't it? Yeah. Um, but maybe right there, have a reference to it, but include that, the previous map and a pop, a table referring to population changes can be found in Appendix Two.
Okay. And, and you know what? I think, um, Commissioner Inman, I think if what you're suggesting is just like a sentence app like there that says, um, reflect new, the first sentence says new, reflect new population data, and then period. We could maybe put the following, the next sentence might be, you know.
Where are you, can you?
Oh, I'm, uh, this is the first sentence in introduction.
Every 10 years?
Yeah. And then so like at the end, because that introduces the idea of shifting populations, then the next sentence might give the fact.
Well, maybe it would be this process is called redistricting, and then, um, maybe it goes there.
Okay.
Oh.
Wherever.
Right? Otherwise, we're separating.
So it could be the 2020 census?
The 20, yeah.
Documented?
Mm-hmm. A 6.6% increase.
A 6.6% increase in
the county.
The county of San Diego's population?
Mm-hmm.
And check me to make sure that. I think it was 6.6 is what I just spouted out.
And at the end, uh, since the last census, would that be appropriate?
Would it be 2021?
It's a 2020 census.
Okay. The 20, okay. Yes, that sounds.
Yeah.
And 6.7?
6.7.
And we're going to include a footnote early in the introduction. Any, uh, errors in numbers or percentages are solely the responsible of Commissioner Ken Inman. Here's his email and phone number. Okay. Very good. No, thank you.
Alex has a comment.
Please, um, Commissioner Dostal?
I was just saying Alex has his hand up from Flo.
Oh, Alex, I'm sorry. Please.
I was just going to jump in and confirm that 6.6 was before adjustment by California State Database, and 6.7 is with the adjustment from California State Database. So you are correct.
There is a great deal of this commission I'm going to miss. That's not one of them. Commissioner Larson?
I, I think if we talk about the increase in the census of numbers, we also might just mention there was also a significant change in the demographic character of the population. And that brings in all the minorities.
Yeah. Commissioner Larson, I think the point's well taken. I would hesitate to try to come up with a language on that now because it is such a serious matter. But for my part, and I remember thinking about this in an earlier draft with regard to another section of the report. I think the point is made clearly enough throughout the report. Let me ask Co-Vice Chair Garcia, because she's been following the dress much more closely. Would, would someone who's reading this understand the nature of those changes?
Well, certainly when they get to the final plan and all the tables that are there, I, I, and, and then there, there is a lot of this information in the appendices. Um, and I will say that it is, you know, when you're putting a, a, a report like this together, this is the introduction. It's sort of a broad stroke. You're, it, um, it's hard to, to know how far to go, how, you know, are you providing enough information? Are you, you know, stepping on a, a different, you know, the, the information that you're going to provide in a different part of the report? So it's, um, I, I think that adding the information, the broad stroke about the increase in population overall in the county is, uh, was a good point. And I think if we start trying to, um, define more in more detail what that population change looked like, I mean, we could talk about, you know, there was more population growth in, in these districts. You know, the high, these districts had a higher rate than these. I mean, there's a lot more information we could get into and, um, but this is really just the introduction. So I, I think we might have captured what we need to capture with, um, what we've got so far. That would be, but I'm, I'm open. I'm open to, to hearing something else.
Rosette, if I could respond, I, I, I think we're talking about what were the main drivers of why we do this. Certainly having a census every 10 years is one. And census showed a population increase. Uh, preferably get to my point, look at the second line where it says, uh, new population data and shifting populations. How about shifting populations and demographics?
Great. Can we add that in?
I, I think that would make the point. That's one.
Very good. I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
There it is. Great. I like that.[1723.28]
Good. Commissioner Larson, thank you. I really wasn't trying to cut you off. I was highlighting, did you want to say more about it?
No, I think that makes the point. We're just looking in the introduction at the major drivers why we're doing this at all.
It's an excellent point. Thank you for that. Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, Chair Beam. So I, could we consider perhaps including in the appendix some additional materials from Flow? But those tables that I had referenced, I didn't see them in the appendix, so maybe we can include them. And specifically what I'm referring to is Flow's Census 101 training from August 12th and August 26th.
The training, all of the training materials are already in there under an appendix table about training, and we refer to training in the sub, the topic about preparation, preparation priorities. So that should, yeah, the Training Continuum.
Right.
And it's included there. It's not, but it's not separated out.
Yeah, so in the Training Continuum, there's a link to the report, but it's not, the actual report isn't printed out, or isn't a thing that's printed out and included as an appendix, as a material in the appendix, is that what you mean?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not following. I thought you said you wanted the, an appendix that had the Flow training, and I believe it's included in the Training Continuum. Staff, is that, would that be correct? Barbara? All the trainings? Oh, I see.
Ms. Donnelly is pointing out that we are already at 600 pages, and that there is a certain level, as you see on the screen now, of reference to the Training Continuum, which of course is available fully electronically on the website. Thank you again to that ad hoc committee. But I think by the standards we have with these kind of materials, this is the right format and level of detail that we've been pursuing because there's several different things that fall into this category.
Right. Well, and I think if someone were interested in that information, it's going to be available on the, it's going to be archived on the website, right? And we'll be able to get there.
Good. I want to turn to Commissioner Pons, but Commissioner Serbin, did you have anything on that? Or do you?
No, I mean, it's useful, and I think the, the, the changes in the demographic data, the population data, I mean, those tables are super useful. And the appendix is sort of the place where we're putting a lot of the supporting data anyway, for what we've done. So I think it's, you know, I mean, it's only, I think it would add maybe 20 pages to the appendix, so I'd support adding it, but whatever, you can do whatever.
Commissioner Inman?
No, I guess my take on this report, Commissioner Serbin, is it's about the report that we have and not necessarily why we did it per se. So there's, there's kind of a difference. So I, I don't think we need to have a lot of information about the changes that occurred in this one. You know, we have all the links and such that would clearly be there for people to pursue.
Thank you. Commissioner Pons?
Yes, I was just going to say, as we pull together the lessons learned and we conduct the SWOT analysis, there's a great opportunity to look at the things as were a success and say why they were a success, and to continue to do those things or to modify them to make them even better. So these are some great ideas, but there may be a place for those ideas in the lessons learned, especially when we get to the SWOT analysis portion. Thank you.
I think the point's extremely well taken because we could also have a more thorough discussion of these matters. And I do think they're worthwhile. It's nothing I think anyone is saying in this part of the discussion, Commissioner Serbin, is to deny the importance of it, far from it. Very good.
Are there, are there other edits or revisions that we needed to show the commission? Let's move. Oh, adding all the dates. Thank you, I can see those. So we've put in 2020 or 2021. And I see Commissioner Kugliak's hand is up.
Yeah, please, Commissioner Kugliak? I think you're muted.
Only, only one was muted, but that's enough. Thank you for those. I was just checking, did you also show Dr. Masewoka's name being corrected?
Can we go back to that page for just a moment? Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we had, when a meeting was in one of the five districts, such as number two, number three, number four, number five, number seven, and when there's something like the Spring Valley Community Center that's held there but is designated as a countywide meeting. And just to be clear that that's for the benefit of making clear where we met our criteria on that. Good, thank you. Please continue.
I think we're just scrolling through to see other edits. Are all the rest of the edits just adding dates, do you think? There's, oh, the tables. Oh, misspell, Dr. Masewoka's name was spelled correctly.
And then also, at the very end of this page, it happened again, it's OU instead of UO.
Another zero? And how about the header code? I don't think we've gotten there yet in District Three. Commissioner Kugliak, you'll maybe be interested to know that some of these tables came to us from Commissioner Inman with the wrong, ah. We had to, we had to do a little cleaning up of that as well.
Looks fantastic, thank you.
There we go.
Okay, could we go back to the introductory page in the thank you section? Right there. I was tempted to try to find a way to de-thank Commissioners Inman and Co-Vice Chair Garcia, but that's not the point. Do you see the extra bullet at all 14 IRC commissioners at the beginning? I don't think we need that bullet. We can just go with the subbullets there. It's always the formatting changes that are hard to just, keep the sentence, just remove the bullet. Yeah, perfect, thank you. All right, any more for the walkthrough? Staff captured everything that you had seen, right? I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown?
Sorry, real quick, on the index, do you want to put a little link that would, if they're wanting to look at a particular chapter really quick to go right directly to that chapter? Like in those there, can they, can you link the page numbers with the page numbers that are within the report itself so they can go right to it? But, I mean, they can, they can do it regularly, but I think there's also a way to just click on that and they can go, they'll take them right to it. Oh, you already got it?
Yeah.
Voila.
Just like that?
Yep.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
I'm not kidding you, the staff is amazing.
Counsel, any further comments?
Yeah, it looks very good to me.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to be calling for a vote in just a moment, but I want to give Commissioners one more time a chance to make any comments or make any questions have. Mr. Inman?
I don't like the font on the tables.
No, I'm not going there. Okay. Commissioner Brown, was that another comment or just a hand from before? Good. Okay, not seeing any other comments? I'm sorry, David?
Of the resolution adopting a final report as included with the agenda materials, you may want to add something to.
And I was going to bring it up on the screen before you voted, thank you. So we'll go ahead and bring the, bring it up, and I'll be asking Counsel as well, I don't know if we need the words as amended or as discussed, but if we can bring up the motion. We don't, we don't have that. And David, thank you for that. You'll note, as included with the agenda materials, obviously it's changed. Marguerite, do we need something like "and as amended"? Or, I'm not, we haven't voted on those as such, although we could certainly just make this a friendly amendment. Any recommendation? Marguerite? Hillary, are you with us?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was, I thought I was unmuted. I can't get it straight today. What I would recommend is after "as included with the agenda materials" and amended by the commission.
Very good. Let me just ask the clerk, do we need to document these as a friendly amendment? Or is that language acceptable?
No, we have a motion by Commissioner Larson, seconded by Commissioner Chen, and if the maker and seconder are fine with it, then it's a friendly amendment.
Commissioner Larson, is this okay with you?
It's okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen? Very good, so it is considered a friendly amendment? Any last comments? Looking at Inman in particular, no. Very good. David, would you please call the role for the vote on this motion?
Thank you, Chair Beam. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Kugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz is absent. Chair Beam?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
The motion passes with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners, the public, Counsel, Staff, Co-Vice Chair Garcia in particular, Commissioner Inman if I have to. Thank you all, seriously. That was an unexpected, interesting and useful discussion, and again, for me, demonstrates the seriousness as well as the commitment we have to moving this forward. Commissioner Larson, did you have a comment? Oh, sorry. So we move back and forward to Agenda Item Eight, the Monthly Budget Update. This is also an informational item for the commission with no action needed. I will note that a staff report and attachments were included with the agenda materials. This month, we will again dispense with staff remarks, although staff is available, of course, to answer any questions that Commissioners may have. Before we entertain such questions, David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Then in advance of today's meeting, Chair Beam, if any member of the public would like to address the commission regarding the monthly budget update, you're welcome to do so. Those present can come forward to the microphone. If you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand. Not seeing any movement in the chamber, not seeing any virtual hands being raised. That concludes public comment, Chair Beam.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, are there any clarifying questions or comments regarding the monthly budget update materials? Seeing none? We will move on. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. But before we turn to adjournment, I'm sure Commissioners will agree that the proper way to end this work is some thank yous. While more detailed acknowledgements are in the final report, as you just saw, I'd like to take just a few minutes to express some gratitude during the meeting itself and invite Commissioners for any corrections or additions that need to be made. First and foremost, I want to thank members of the public from all parts of the county who throughout the past year attended meetings and offered testimony about their communities. Whether speaking or listening, your participation was critical to our mission, and your dedication was inspiring, and you again have our thanks. I also want to thank all the following people, again, whose contributions are described better in the final report. Staff lead Barbara Jimenez, as well as Staff Liberty Donnelly, Nicole Temple, Keith Van Wagner, Angela Fang, Kim Lau, Nicole Villa, and Letitia Montoya, with the comma in the right place after Nicole Villa. Clerk David Hall, who I cannot ever think enough, as well as former clerks you'll remember, Andrew Potter and Aaron Demarest. And I think there's a wonderful irony that Andrew Potter will be receiving this, the statutorily required material tomorrow in his role as Clerk of the Board. Counselors Marguerite Leone and Hillary Gibson, if I continued, I would be ruled out of order and in violation of various legal materials, so I'll just say thank you. IRC demographer, Flow Analytics, especially Alex Bash, John McKenzie, and Kate Elliott, who is a name I know Commissioners have seen, but it's really, really impressive what she and the rest of the team at Flow behind the scenes have done to keep things moving along. John and Alex are with, with us at all hours, but there's a team with them that really does amazing work for us. Consultants, Dr. Christian Gross, Dr. Natalie Masewoka, Jordan, and Mr. Bruce Adelson. IRC Outreach Consultant, Asian Business Association San Diego, especially Jason Paguio, Rosanna Zane, TJ Zane, and Alex Via Fuerte. And of course, my fellow Commissioners, who have given so much of their time, wisdom, and energy. It's been a humbling, humbling, humbling pleasure to serve as your chair, but more importantly, a true honor to be part of such a great team. Commissioners, any further comments? Because I'm about to move towards adjournment, I just want to make sure we're not missing anybody. Very good. Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Kugliak?
Well, those were very good words, Chair Beam, and sincere and from the heart. We can all attest to that. You know, it's difficult to express in words my appreciation, but allow me to sum it up with two words, and they're very simple but pretty profound. And those two words are, thank you to everyone on this net. Thank you very much for all that you've done and all that you've meant to me and the public for doing this work. I mean, the challenges were many, but I believe that we rose to the occasion and did what the public expected of us and what we took an oath to do. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kugliak?
I agree with all of your thanks, but I'd like to particularly call out you as our chair and our wonderful co-chairs as well because I know you all do so, so much. Then it's been a year and probably been the equivalent of three for you guys, so we do appreciate that very, very much. My other comment would be, we will see each other again for lessons learned, and I would ask the public, who is our first thanks? Comment on that, too. Please, please send us comments on what could have been better from your perspective as well in terms of how the interaction went, in terms of communication, in terms of anything. Any lessons learned from you are as important or more so than anything from us.
Thank you for that and could not agree more. And I do really hope the public will continue to join us. And that concludes the business before the Independent Redistricting Commission today. I'd like to thank again Members of the public and fellow Commissioners for joining us. Tomorrow, December 15th, 2021, is the statutory deadline to file the IRC's 2021 redistricting plan for the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors with the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. The officers and I will be working with IRC staff to ensure this is completed. I'll add my thanks to the officers, to my co-vice chairs, but I'll talk about that at our next meeting. Speaking of that, we do have, as we've discussed today, a number of potential business items. Staff will be in touch about when the next meeting may be, but at this point, we will be looking at least for a special meeting to be held virtually on Wednesday, January 12th, 2022. 12th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Commissioners, please continue to check your email for communication from IRC staff about scheduling and other matters, and of course, for Members of the public as well. More information will continue to be posted on the IRC website, www.dryyourcommunity.com. Thanks again for attending today. Seeing no further comments, this meeting is adjourned at 4:58 PM. Happy holidays, happy New Year, and look forward to being in touch soon.
Okay.